Well, Happy New Year, everyone. It is January 7th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, and I'm calling this regular city council meeting to order. For the record, all council is present. And with that, if you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Madison Creek, including the Skawali Indian Tribe and the Squaxin Indian Tribe. Can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on our approved agenda, under public recognitions and presentations, a certificate of appreciation from the Washington State Department of Veteran Affairs. Looks like it's got Donald.
I don't know if you remember last time I was here, I didn't bring notes. But this time I have to remember dates, and I can never remember those off the top of my head, so I had to bring notes this time. So again, Mayor, council members, and audience, and my leadership, thank you for having us out here tonight. It means a lot to me to be here, to be able to present this to the City of Lacey. I grew up here. I was a River Ridge student, you know, go Hawks. I went to St. Martin's here, so again, this is my longtime home. I'm raising my family here. And for the City of Lacey to show that you guys care enough about veterans to help support this program, this project that we push for out, means a lot to me. It also means a lot that my entire senior leadership is here, so no pressure on me, right? Like, not to make me nervous, but with that being said, though, implementing the emblems on all your vehicles for the City of Lacey is going to make such a huge impact to the community as a whole, not just the veteran community, but knowing wherever you look, when you see that City of Lacey vehicle, there's going to be that 988 emblem there, that reminder of, that's a resource I have to get help, to get support when I'm in crisis, or if I know somebody who's in crisis. So for me, that means a lot. Again, as a veteran who has gone through that process and has had that moment of crisis, not knowing where to call, knowing that it's right there when I need it. And then, it also helps stress that stigma, right? We see so much stigma behind mental health and seeking services. As a veteran, it was a huge barrier that I ran into all the time, but when you start to see resources available everywhere in the community, it really helps break down that barrier. It helps you see that wherever you go, no matter what you do, there is a resource available. And with the City of Lacey promoting that emblem, saying, here, look at this, here it is, we're here for you, we can support you, that means the world, not just to me, but to the veteran community as a whole. And as well as the funds, I gotta definitely thank for that, because with the purchasing of those emblems, that money is going to go towards a grant that we allocate back out to the community. A hundred percent of that money goes right back into a community-based program to help support veteran mental health programs. Last year, we awarded approximately $11,000 to an equine-assisted therapy program, which was able to use that money to host a whole cohort for veterans to come out and get mental health services through that process. And so this money is going to be added to that, and hopefully, if I can sell a couple more emblems, you know? So if you know your friends, family, if they want to buy some, let me know. I'm definitely happy to set that up. But with that being said, I'd really love to introduce our director, David. He's going to take it from here, and he is way more professional than me.
Thank you.
Good job. Were you able to show this, little license plate?
Yeah. Oh, it's good.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to come and have a conversation with you. I just want to say thank you to Don for the efforts that he did in working with the City of Lacey and the partnership that you all have with us in order to do this. This is very meaningful for not only the Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs, but for veterans, family members, and transitioning service members. This is, not all cities are doing this. You are leading when it comes to doing this, and we really are honored, and it's a privilege to be able to say thank you to you today for doing this, because this is going to help prevent veteran suicide in the state of Washington. So, as Don mentioned, being able to have these in our vehicles, as you see this, and you're driving around, be able to do that, it's gonna, your commitment. And I just want to say thank you very much for doing that, because, again, it's very meaningful, and we really do appreciate your partnership, working with state agencies, and also with the families in the community, because as we all know, we have JBLM here very close. And as Don mentioned, he's a veteran and also lives here. I also reside here in the county as well, so I just want to say thank you very much for that. And we also have a certificate that we wanted to present. If Mayor Ryder, if you wouldn't mind?
So it's a certificate of appreciation, the City of Lacey, Washington. On behalf of your Washington State Department of Veterans Affairs, thank you for helping increase awareness of the 988 suicide and crisis lifeline, and bringing hope to communities across our state. It's because of the commitment of individuals, partners, organizations, and communities like yours, that Washington State is recognized for serving those who serve, and signed by myself and our deputies. So, thank you.
Thank you. One more picture over here?
Yeah, yeah. With the sign, the license. Ready? Three, two, one. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. They got stuck there. Thank you. my first cousin, who spent his high school years with me, went off and joined the military Thank you. You guys want to do a group picture in front, too? and was stationed at JBLM, served overseas in Iraq. Yeah. Yeah. Dave, I think we're gonna try to get that. He was actually the, they were the first, their last Striker Brigade out of Iraq. Okay. Thanks, David. And then he came home first of January of October, or January of 2011, and by October, You're on. Thanks, David. So, we're here with everyone. Tom, do you guys remember that? All right, everyone? No wonder not. Here. Thank you. middle of October of 2011, I could tell that he was in a really bad situation. Well, yeah. We'll definitely keep pushing that out. I knew he was in debt by some decisions that a young kid would make and didn't realize, and it just kept on getting harder and harder for him. And I remember the last time I saw him, as he was walking out my house, thinking to myself, I need to get him some help, and I have no idea how to do it. And it was the worst feeling, one of the worst feelings I've ever had in my life. And a couple days later, he killed himself. And it was from, really, that moment that I made it sort of a mission to have, make sure that other families weren't going through the same pain that I was going through. And through a lot of hard work from a lot of people here at the City of Lacey and this Lacey City Council, the first thing that we tried to do is get mental health services down here. And we went through the whole process, and they said, sorry, you will never have veteran mental health services here in Lacey. They have them at Vet Center in Tacoma, and Tacoma is too close, it will never, never happen. And we didn't take no for an answer. And it's like, we have to find some others' ways. Tacoma could have been on the other side of the mountains for veterans who are going through crisis. And out of that work came the Lacey Veterans Services Hub, which is, obviously, has changed the lives of so many people and so many veterans in our community, not only in our community, but really from across the United States and overseas. And so, to think, you know, here, a little over 13 years later, we had the Veterans Hub, we have a program like this, and there, some help is gonna be just a telephone call away, and we'll have it on all of our city vehicles. It didn't seem like it could be a reality all those years ago. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for all the work that you do at the Veterans Hub, and we really appreciate it. And if we can, for those people who need some help, please reach out. Please call the number, because you're not alone. You know, my 21-year-old cousin was in a situation, and I didn't know a number to call. And so, it exists now, and hopefully, we will be saving lives, and so, thank you. Okay. Next up, under public recognitions, is our Thurston Regional Planning Council. Sorry you have to go after that. Mark.
Good to see you. I am Mark Daly, and the Executive Director at Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I have a presentation. All right, thank you. Do I get to control it here?
Yep.
I do? I do. I'm the Executive Director at Thurston Regional Planning Council. I really appreciate you making time on your agenda. This is something that our members have asked it to make sure that, that I'm getting out, at least providing an update on some of the key pieces to our members, at least on an annual basis. And so usually, when I come to you, I'm talking about one specific project that we have going on. Today, I'm going to go over a kind of a suite of work that we have. There is so much work going on where we're collaborating regionally right now, it's pretty amazing when you look at it. What I go over tonight isn't all of it, either. But very quickly, just because it's been a little while since I've been here, and for the audience, Thurston Regional Planning Council, who we are, we are not part of Thurston County. We're an independent organization, voluntary, 23 members, and that includes all the cities, the county, two tribal nations, all the special purpose districts in our area that kind of make the Thurston region work, voluntarily come and plan around our table on issues that cross jurisdictional boundaries. And so, we are primarily working on land use, environmental planning, and transportation planning. We program out federal funds. There are funds that come to our region to be used on local projects that come through Thurston Regional Planning Council, TRPC. And Lacey is well-represented at TRPC. The Chair of our Transportation Policy Board is Mayor Ryder, and the Chair of our council is Councilmember Vasquez. And so, Lacey has taken a leadership position in our council for a number of years, and really appreciate that. One of the big things, like I said, is programming those federal funds. We just finished our Call for Projects in December, where we programmed out over $20 million to be used on local projects in our area. That includes a little over $1.6 million for college, the College Way improvements, and that's something that has been funded through TRPC in pieces for quite some time. So, looking forward to keeping that momentum going on that College Way project. Another big piece of what we do, we are a clearinghouse for tons of statistics in our area. If you want to know anything about population, employment, education, if you go to our website, trpc.org, across our banner is something called "The Profile," you will find excellent information on all kinds of subjects that impact our region at the county level and at the individual jurisdiction level. All right. So I'm going to talk a bit about some of the work that we've got going on that directly relates to Lacey in a big way. Martin Way Corridor, this is something we've been working on for a number of years. There is a draft final report that's out now for review. The purpose of this project was to take a look at the Martin Way Corridor, clear from Deutaro Road into Olympia, where Y is with Pacific. And so, it includes Olympia, Lacey, Thurston County, and intercity transit is also a big partner on this work. And what this is doing is looking at what kind of land use do we want to see along this corridor, and what are some things we can do from a transportation perspective to help make that vision a reality? And that latter part is really where TRPC's been focusing our work. One of the key pieces that has come out of that corridor study is the need for better pedestrian access along Martin Way. You notice, as you drive it, there are long stretches where there is not a place you can cross the street, like you see here, where here is a person that's going to ultimately take the bus, but they don't have a sidewalk on their side of the street, and they need to get across to get to the bus stop. Those are the kinds of things that we're talking about when we're looking at, how can we improve that access? And so, right now, the work is looking at identifying areas to improve that pedestrian access, for crosswalks in particular, and then we'll be working to design, conceptual design, for up to 10 of those crossings. We just had a public meeting on this two weeks ago. There is still a survey out where people can provide feedback on where we need pedestrian crossings along Martin Way. Encourage people, again, if you go to trpc.org, it's just on that banner. It'll have a link to the open house and to the survey for the Martin Way Crossing Strategy, open until January 10th, so you've still got a few more days left on that. High-capacity transportation, this is one that has a lot of interest in our community, and so, wanted to go over some of the results, because this has been a council priority for a couple of years. We also received some money from the state legislature. And really, what this work is, is looking at the existing express bus service that we have between Olympia and Pierce County, looking at the potential for light rail, looking at the potential for commuter rail, and also looking at the existing Amtrak Cascades service, and looking out 25 years, what are we working towards in this region in terms of high-capacity transportation? We had a visioning event on this in October to talk about those findings, and one of the key findings of this is that over the next 25 years, and really, in 25 years, we are not going to be at the density for rail, either light rail or commuter rail. And in fact, we're not going to be that close to the kind of density that the Federal Transit Authority generally looks for when making investments in rail. And so, what came out of this visioning event is, we've got the ongoing work looking at I-5 through the Niskali Delta, and where WashDOT right now is doing the Environmental Policy Act review for that. So, one of the things that came out of that visioning event is, let's have our chairs write a letter to WashDOT to emphasize the importance of making sure that a high occupancy vehicle, HOV lane, carpool lane, is considered in part of that NEPA review, and also that we consider giving transit priority on the right side of the road, so that those express buses would then have kind of a competitive advantage over the rest of traffic. Would greatly improve the speeds of those express buses and make it a much better service for, to connect Thurston County up to Pierce. So that's something that we'll be working with the legislature on over the next couple of years. A lot of work going on around the comprehensive plan updates. I know you're talking about this all the time, but just to, just as a reminder, there are a lot of new requirements for the comp plans this time. Housing has been a big area of emphasis. Lacey and Olympia, Thurston County, and Tumwater have been working with TRPC on some of those new requirements, like housing need. And the jurisdictions wanted to have our council adopt those housing need, the housing numbers as part of this comp plan, which we did in December. And so, the rest of the time, all the updates are due by December 2025. We're going to continue to be supporting on this subject in particular. We did a survey of land capacity to see, is there enough capacity to provide the housing need that's called for? The results of that analysis said, for the cities, there is, for the county, not so much. So we've got some work to do in our area to make sure that we've got the space for all the housing need that we expect to see over the next 20-plus years. Another piece of this is, we haven't updated our county-wide planning policies. That's something that's called for, required, under the Growth Management Act, is to have county-wide planning policies. Ours were last updated in 2016, and working with the jurisdictions, we've identified kind of early on in this comp plan update, that once we're done with these comprehensive plan updates in 2025, we need to go back to the county-wide planning policies and do a more thorough update of those. And so that's something that we're going to start scoping later in 2025. Another part of comp plans is, in state law, and this graphic is, says a lot, and is confusing as it looks, which is basically just, it lays out in statute that there are these pieces that need to kind of mutually reinforce each other. And what I mean is, so, we are responsible for producing a regional transportation plan for the Thurston region at TRPC. By law, it must be consistent with the land use elements of all our city and county comprehensive plans. By law, those all have to be consistent with their transportation elements. All the elements within a comp plan need to be consistent with each other, and our regional transportation plan needs to be consistent with all the local transportation elements. So, that is a very bureaucratic statement to basically say, we need to look and make sure that all of these planning efforts are working together. And there was a new requirement, actually, a strengthened requirement, that organizations like TRPC, we are also designated as a regional transportation planning organization, RTPO, under the Growth Management Act. And it says that RTPOs like us need to review all the comp plan amendments to make sure that they are consistent. And so, we worked with jurisdiction staff to create a checklist. There's 14 different criteria, with some sub-criteria under those, that we will be using to evaluate the transportation elements and the land use elements of each of the comp plans as they're done. We've already had a little bit of a test run with this, and it worked pretty well. City of Olympia, they're doing their comp plan elements in pieces, and so they already have a full draft of their transportation element, and they asked us to do the review using the checklist. We did so, and it worked quite well. We were able to provide them with a letter of kind of preliminary consistency, but we'll take a look at all the finals as they're done. So that's just, we're working with staff. Staff are well-aware of this need and have worked with us on the process, but this is a step that we'll be needing to work together on before you do that final adoption of your comp plan at the end of 2025. Thurston commutes. So, folks may not be aware that, so the nine most populated counties in our state are required to have a commute trip reduction program, and the intent of that is to reduce the wear and tear on our roadways, and to reduce emissions, and reduce the need for more capacity on our transportation system. And so, the way that that works is, the county and each city in those counties is required to have a commute trip reduction plan. In Thurston County, for, since the beginning, the cities and the county have contracted with TRPC to do that, that coordination of the commute trip reduction program. There have been changes at the state level for this as well, and a requirement that all of the local commute trip reduction plans be updated by June 30th of 2025. And so, our staff, we've been working with Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, on developing individual commute trip reduction plans. We're well underway, there's already a draft that has been discussed at Lacey's Planning Commission, so this will be coming, if it hasn't already, it'll be coming year-all's way before too long, this plan, and we'll be looking for each of the jurisdictions to take action in spring of 2025, so that then we can submit for all the jurisdictions and the county by that June 30th deadline. And there's a fair amount of funding that comes along with this commute trip reduction program, so it's important for us to make sure that we're hitting those marks, so that we can keep that funding for the region. Regional Safety Action Plan. So this is one where you all have applied for and are working on a safety action plan. You got a Safe Streets for All federal grant, and so did Thurston County. But we were encouraged to also go, TRPC, to get a Safe Streets for All grant, to get a regional lens to that safety action plan, and also because there are a number of jurisdictions that don't have the resources to develop that plan on their own. I'm talking about some of the smaller jurisdictions, like Tonino, Rayneer. And so, we're doing an effort that is going to start a little more in earnest in, near the end of 2025. I bring this up to say, we are not looking to duplicate the work that Lacey and Thurston County are already doing through your Safe Streets for All grant. We're looking to take what you're already working on, and then looking at the areas that aren't covered, and rolling that up into kind of a regional level of what we can do around transportation safety. Because if folks don't know, transportation safety statistics have been going in the wrong direction over the past five-plus years. For a while there, things were kind of leveling off and looking good. Over the past five years, we've seen quite an increase in fatalities and serious injury accidents, especially as related to people walking and biking. That is becoming a very large problem across our state. So those are some of the areas we'll be focusing on this, in this. Some other ongoing projects that we've got, and the only reason I didn't highlight these separately is because they're maybe a little further from when they'll come in front of you, but Lacey is part of our partnership where we got a federal grant from Environmental Protection Agency to look at stormwater facilities in our region, and come up with a methodology for prioritizing those for correction, for, to, what's the word I'm looking for? Upgrade, basically, those stormwater facilities, based on the potential impact to water quality and to salmon habitat slash kind of ecosystem services. So, through that lens, what are our most important stormwater facilities to retrofit, to improve the treatment of those? So, that is something that we're wrong direction over the past five plus years. For a while there, things were kind of leveling off and looking good. Over the past five years, we've seen a quite an increase in fatalities and serious injury accidents, especially as related to people walking and biking. That is becoming a very large problem across our state. So those are some of the areas we'll be focusing on this in this. Some other ongoing projects that we've got, and the only reason I didn't highlight these separately is because they're maybe a little further from when they'll come in front of you. But Lacey is part of our partnership where we got a federal grant from Environmental Protection Agency to look at stormwater facilities in our region and come up with a methodology for prioritizing those for for correction for to, what's the word I'm looking for? Upgrade, basically, those stormwater facilities based on the potential impact to water quality and to salmon habitat slash ecosystem services. So through that lens, what are our most important stormwater facilities to retrofit, to improve the treatment of those? So that is something that we're working on, that you're going to hear more about that later in 2025 and 2026, when when we've got a consultant that's on board that's going to start kind of rolling out some ideas for that tool for how we will prioritize. We've got work going around emergency detour routes. There are about 50 detour routes that have been designated for our area. And what we're doing now is working with State Patrol, State DOT, all of our jurisdictions, taking a look at each of those 50. And are there are there things that we can do to improve the function of those detour routes on a daily basis, but especially when they're actually being used for detour routes? So these will be small, relatively minor things, like, could we stripe this in a different way to to help improve? If we had like some bulb out here, would that help divert traffic or or control traffic? So looking at relatively minor changes to the system that help the function of it, especially when it's being used as a detour route. Our regional transportation plan, that's one of the big kind of foundational documents for us at Thurston Regional Planning Council and for our region. And we have to update that every five years. And our next update is due July 2025. So we are very well underway on that. There'll be a draft coming out in March. And that'll be an important piece to make sure we get people's eyes on, to make sure that it really represents where we expect to be going over the next 20 to 25 years. That's generally the planning horizon for that document. Even though we update it on a five-year basis, it's always looking out 2025 years. And then lastly, Regional Trails Plan. This has been an area of emphasis. We we've got a updated version of our Regional Trails Plan complete in 2023. It has a lot of action for TRPC to take, and we've been looking for funding to to take that action. We receive funding through that federal call for projects that I talked about. The Policy Board and Council made it a prior, this implementation, a priority for that funding cycle. So we have it funded beginning in 2028. We are still looking for funding to get this work going quicker than 2028. Because this is all related to our regional trail system, making sure that we're keeping it up, that it it's safe, that it's well signed, all those pieces that people expect and need from that system so that they can use it both recreationally and for transportation, making sure that we are constantly coming back and revisiting what it takes to make that system effective. So, thank you. I just went through a ton of stuff. So the point of this was to give a little bit of an overview of some of the pieces that we have going on. You're going to hear about each of these in turn as as we get them complete. Anytime you want more information, I will, I will come talk to you anytime you will give me time on the agenda. So I really, again, I really appreciate the time and happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Just a comment. One of the things that we've talked about a little bit here at Council that we've also discussed at TRPC is the opportunity to update the county planning policies.
Yes.
And you mentioned that because there've been so many updates, you know, the housing allocation report that TRPC produced for the cities to use as part of our comprehensive planning doesn't have climate elements incorporated into it. And so we got feedback at TRPC that, hey, how come this housing allocation plan doesn't contemplate any of the Thurston regional climate mitigation work that we're doing? Our goals for reducing carbon emissions, because the law is brand new, and it didn't say that we had to do that, and we had a very short timeframe. But there's this opportunity when we update the county planning policies that we could start to align those things. And so I, that's one of the things we've talked a little bit about here, that like that's something we need to be thinking about, is that they were not required to align, but we should be trying to match those things up.
Absolutely. It's been almost a decade since we've done a thorough update of those. So there, there's been a lot of change. There's a lot of opportunity to improve. I'm sorry, Rick. It's true, though.
Anyone else? So I, one of the things that we have going for us here in Lacey is that we have a youth council and who's an advisory body to the city council. And obviously, we know how hard it is to sort of get feedback on some of these, you know. And I was just thinking, maybe we can set a time for you to come or staff to come and talk to our youth council and get direct feedback.
I would love that.
On that, since since they're the ones that's going to be inheriting everything, all these decisions that we're making, we should have their input on it as well.
That would be excellent.
So we'll, we'll try to connect you with that.
Anytime you've got room, I will be happy to do it.
Great. Anyone else? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you all. Normally, I would stick around, but today is my son's 18th birthday, so.
Well, tell him happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yeah. So next, we move on to proclamations. And first proclamation is the Korean American Day.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas in 1882, the United States of Korea signed a treaty establishing a peaceful relationship, friendship, and commerce, which led to 102 Korean immigrants to set sail for Honolulu, Hawaii in December 1902 on the SS Gaelic.
Whereas for more than a century, Korean immigrants and their descendants have helped build America's prosperity, strengthen our communities, and defend our freedoms through their service in World War I, World War II, the Korean conflict, the Vietnam War, and other wars. Korean Americans have served our nation with honor and courage, upholding the values that make our country strong. Ann?
Whereas Korean Americans are an integral part of our community, with contributions observed in all facets of American life, from politics to industry, entrepreneurship to volunteerism, the arts and education, and?
Whereas Korean Americans of all generations and recent immigrants have made a significant contribution to the cultural and economic vitality of the United States and continue to make great contributions to our nation, our region, and our city. Ann?
Whereas these contributions occurred despite harassment, discrimination, and anti-Asian hate, all of which unfortunately remain prevalent today. Ann?
Whereas the City of Lacey is committed to honoring the significant history and contributions of our Korean American community members, and we strive to reduce barriers that result in increased social exclusion, economic mobility, language access, and meaningful civic engagement. Ann?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim January 13th, 2025 as Korean American Day in the City of Lacey. And encourage businesses, organizations, public and private entities, and community members to recognize Korean American Day. Take time to celebrate the contributions of Korean Americans and join the City of Lacey in celebrating and welcoming, creating a welcoming environment and a culture of belonging. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
Kami, will you come up and accept this and introduce?
Want to do a quick picture, then I'll turn it over.
Good evening, Mayor Andy Ryder, City of Lacey council members and audience. On behalf of the Washington State chapter of the Korean American Day Celebration Foundation, we want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the City of Lacey for issuing this meaningful proclamation recognizing Korean American Day. This day honors the arrival of the first Korean immigrants to the United States on January 13, 1903, and celebrates the enduring contributions of Korean Americans to our nation's progress while reminding us of the importance of unity and cultural diversity. Thank you for joining us in the celebration of this rich heritage, the vibrant Korean American community here in Lacey, and thank you for your outstanding support. Thank you so much.
And our next proclamation is the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the civil rights movement in the 1960s profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. Ann?
Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a civil rights leader, devoted his life to the nonviolent advancement of civil rights and public service, and his dream is no less inspirational and important today than when he first expressed it 60 years ago. Ann?
Whereas Dr. King believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all community members to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of the United States of America. Ann?
Whereas even with the progress achieved during the civil rights movement and subsequent decades, inequities, injustices, racism, and other forms of discrimination and oppression are still prevalent in our society today. Ann?
Whereas Dr. King's life was struck down by a bullet of bigotry on April 4, 1968. However, his dream of pursuing a world free from prejudice and injustice lives on. Ann?
Whereas we honor and celebrate Dr. King's memory, and importantly, we preserve his legacy, one that calls upon all of us to stand up against injustice, protect our most sacred tenets of democracy, and continue to work towards a more equitable society. Ann?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Lacey. And urge all community members to take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's vision and join me in rededicating ourselves to continuing to advance the principles of justice and equity for all. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
To Mayor Ryder, to Deputy Mayor Miller, and certainly to the council, and certainly to all of our friends and community, we greet you in the name of Jesus Christ and certainly offer you his peace this after, excuse me, this evening. It's a lovely night to be in the the council chambers in the City of Lacey and certainly grateful for this privilege that we get a chance to, of course, experience each and every year. January 15, 1929, a king was born into obscurity and certainly into a difficult time, certainly as we were experiencing and understanding our nation at a very real and difficult moment and or spot in time. April 4, 1968, that same king who wore this color that I wear was gunned down and certainly killed that day, April 4, 16, 1968, there at the Lorraine Motel. The man died, but the dream continued to live on. And I'm grateful tonight that as we sit here and certainly as we stand here together and certainly as we celebrate, of course, January 15, Dr. King's birthday, and certainly at the New Life Baptist Church, January 20, there that Monday at 1:00 p.m. I'm grateful that we have a council who continues to have these conversations, who continues to say the things that need to be said. And even amidst our difficulties and our disagreements, I'm glad to see that we continue to keep the king's legacy alive and certainly that we continue to promote his motives and his dream. I'm grateful to each of you, and I'm hopeful that we'll continue to have this dialogue and that certainly as we continue to celebrate the king, we'll remember what he died for, but we'll remember most what he lived for. And so thank you so much tonight. And certainly, Dr. Thelma Jackson would would come along the end and conclude in that fashion. We greet you on behalf of New Life Baptist Church.
Amen.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. You've done this years, for years now, and we appreciate that. And we reflect upon the times in which we live, where we are such a divided nation, so full of hatred, so full of racism, where discrimination is continuing to take place. And your proclamation speaks to this. You recently passed another proclamation that talked directly about hatred and racism and the efforts here to make sure that the City of Lacey was a welcoming place where all people felt as they belonged. What has happened over the years since Martin Luther King's holiday was declared is that we have removed ourselves from looking at those things that he really stood for. The words in your proclamation, the words that Reverend Reed just referred to, and it's all been distilled down to what people are calling a day of service. This is not about a day of service. Martin Luther King holiday has been hijacked into a day of service because it's easier to talk about cleaning a stream, hugging a tree, and cutting ivy than it is to talk about racism, discrimination, inequity, and the things that exist in our community, in our world, and in our lives. So with this proclamation reaffirming the City of Lacey and its commitment to the things that Dr. King stood for, we can revisit what this day needs to be about. We talk all the time about the need for the community to engage in courageous conversations. Let us do that. Let us not relegate Martin Luther King holiday to a day of service and a day off. And Lacey can lead the way in that. So with this proclamation, you're recommitting to what you've always stood for, and we stand shoulder to shoulder with you in helping to make that a reality so that Dr. King's dream does continue to lead on, live on, and it does not be relegated to a day of service and a day off. Thank you.
Thank you. Why, I love you so much, Dr. Jackson. You always tell it straight and how it needs to be told. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the work that you're doing on our Commission on Equity, and I appreciate the conversations that we continue to have, recognizing we need more conversations. Right? And this work is so important. You know how dear it is to myself and to this council, who understands that we have a long ways to go. And I agree, this is not just a day of service, but it should be a day of reflection and action and conversation. And we'll talk some more about making sure that happens going forward. Thank you. Okay. Next up is public comments. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comments. Is there anyone wishing to address this council? Seeing none. Then let's go on to our next agenda. I'm, it's Resolution Number 1161, the multifamily tax exemption program expansion.
Hi. Good evening, Council. Happy New Year, everybody. It's nice to be back and see everybody's faces. I'm Jennifer Adams, Housing Coordinator here at the city. And excuse me just a moment here, and be prepared with the glasses. So tonight, I'm here to present Resolution Number 1161, which proposes setting a public hearing date for January 21st to discuss the potential expansion of the multifamily tax exemption, otherwise known as the MFTE, program into a new residential target area, formerly known as the Neighborhood Commercial District. The MFTE program has been in place in the Woodland District since 2014, supporting both market rate and also affordable housing. As the city continues to grow, expanding the program to other areas could further promote housing development and affordability. At the October 8th work session, the council directed staff to explore expanding the MFTE program with a focus on affordability. Three directives were given, including designating the Neighborhood Commercial District as a new residential target area for both the 12-year and the 20-year MFTE programs, expanding the Woodland District's existing MFTE program to include the 20-year exemption option, and also introducing a 12-year extension option for current particip, excuse me, for current participants in both the eight-year and 12-year programs in these districts. As required by state law, adopting Resolution Number 1161 would notify the public of the council's intent to designate the Neighborhood Commercial District as a new residential target area and would initiate a public hearing to gather input As required by state law, adopting Resolution Number 1161 would notify the public of the council's intent to designate the Neighborhood Commercial District as a new residential target area and would initiate a public hearing to gather input on these potential changes. So this evening, staff is recommending Option 1, adopting Resolution Number 1161, to set the public hearing on January the 21st, and after the hearing, the council can review public input and then consider draft ordinance language to formally expand the MFTE program. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time if there are any.
I would move to adopt Resolution 1161 notifying the public of the council's intent to designate a new residential targeted area and setting a date for a public hearing.
Second? It's been moved in second discussion. So I'll just bring one thing up. I was under the impression that the only way you can get to the 20-year exemption is if you start off with an eight-year exemption and then, uh... Twelve. Well, we're, no, and then you decide to do the affordable housing piece that then would get you up to the 20, because that would give you 12 more years, so you eight plus 12, that, right?
Yeah, you're really close, and that is one way to get to the 20. A third option that the city did not originally adopt is the 20-year program on its own. That does have more stringent requirements for affordable housing components, so that is what we were in our work session looking to achieve.
Okay, that's... Go ahead.
I believe Jennifer mentioned January 21st is a potential date for a public hearing. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, should we make that part of the motion?
It's actually part of the resolution itself that sets that date, so.
January 21st? That's not Martin Luther King. Day after?
Day after.
Oh, it's day after, okay. I was like...
All right.
Okay, is there any other discussion? And it's been moved and accepted, seconded to adopt Resolution 1161 notifying the public of the council's intent to designate a new residential targeted area and setting a date for a public hearing. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
All right, thank you very much.
Onto the mayor's report, and I have one report out. If I could direct you to the letter that I've sent this council, and hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to read it. Basically, our process for recognizing people within our community to have a honorary name be listed under a street name requires this council to go through a process to adopt a resolution to do that. And in the packet, you can see my letter to this council that is asking us to consider having a resolution be brought up to have the Franz Anderson be renamed Chief Brooks Street Ward.
It'd be a commemorative sign underneath the Franz Anderson Street sign that says, "Chief Steve Brooks."
Yeah.
Similar to the sign that was created for Master-
Will it say "Street," or was it just?
It would just say his name.
Just say his name. And so, we did this not too long ago, as you remember, right, in front of the Veteran Services Hub, and so this would be the second time that we would be doing this within our community, and I couldn't think of a better person to have their name currently displayed on a, on a street than Chief Brooks. I can, I go into somewhat detail about what Steve, the chief, has meant to this community, and on a personal note, he has been someone I have admired for a very long time with his leadership, and he always seems to be, as we're just talking about this, the smartest person in the room when you're, when you're talking to him, and he is retiring, has retired, and I was just recently attended the new swearing-in ceremony for our next chief, and we will also be having a recognition celebration of Steve this coming Friday that I will be attending. And so, what my motion would be is to direct staff to prepare a resolution placing a commander of street name sign honoring Fire Chief Steve Brooks on Franz Street Southeast for council consideration on January 21st, 2025, and I, I would recommend is, we put this under the, under the consent calendar, so we, it'd be just formality, and so we, we would have to do, you know, it'd be part of it, but that would be just a formality, so that... Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, I can think of no one more deserving in this community. Having worked with Chief Brooks on a number of different things, from EMS Medic One Council to TCOM, to actually sitting together as president and vice president of an HOA board for 13 years, there is no better leader in this community. You know, and you mentioned that always the smartest guy in the room, it's true, not only the smartest guy in the room, but always completely humble about it. Just the true definition of a servant leader. So, yeah, I can think of no one better or more deserving.
Councilman?
I think you all remember how passionate I was about Master Sergeant Leslie Johnson's, you know, him being honored that way. I know we all share the same with Chief Brooks, so he's a great example for a policy like this to, for naming streets.
Anyone else? Then it's been motion and seconded to direct staff to prepare a resolution placing that commander of street name sign honoring Fire Chief, Fire Chief Steve Brooks on Franz Street Southeast for council consideration on the 2021st, 2025, under the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I didn't think that would be the case. It's been approved unanimously, and thank you, council, and I just want to recognize that Chief Schmidt is here, and thank you for taking over for a legend. I know you have big shoes to fill, but I am so confident that you're going to be able to do it, and I look forward, and this city looks forward to your leadership in our community, so thank you so much. Okay. That's all I have for the mayor's report. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have a few items to report out on the city manager report, and the first one, as the council's aware, we've been in our, over at the depot location off of Lebanon Street. We've had, for a couple of years, a building of the, of a market, and it's evolved into the night market, and so tonight, I want to invite up Wesley Nguyen, Economic Development Coordinator, as well as Jason Huang, owner of Sway Night Market, to provide an overview and year-round report of this past year's activity and set up for what we might be trying to do for next year.
All right, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Ryder and council members. For the record, my name is Wesley Nguyen, Economic Development Coordinator. For my part for this presentation, I'll do a quick introduction of Jason and Sway LLC, and then Jason will then do a presentation on the night market. We contracted with Sway in early April of 2024 to coordinate 16 market events. Jason and his team did a great job recruiting vendors, local vendors, and operating the event on the night of the event. We select Sway after a robust RFP and interview process, so instead of doing the status quo of one evening market and one day market, they proposed to do night markets on every other Friday, and so we thought that was very innovative, and their proposal was just to have a consistency and to make it a fun place for folks to come and enjoy the evening. And it did work. The night market have been a great success, and Jason will say the numbers and the data with you in a minute, but, so now, folks around the community know that Olympia have the farmers market, but they also know that Lacey have the night market now. So without any further, I'll introduce Jason.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Wesley. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and everybody, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is, my name is Jason Huang. I am the creator, owner of Sway LLC, and we specialize, I like to say, we're the party people. We like to carry a good time. That also creates a platform for local businesses and organizations to, to have an opportunity to showcase their brand, get some exposure, and also create a fun atmosphere for the entire community to come together. That's aligned, also in line with the city's mission of being inclusive and open and welcoming everyone to, to this community. I have some exciting things to show you, and, let me see here.
What's that? You have to use that.
Oh, okay.
You're gonna have to use that, yeah. There you go.
Like I said, we're a platform for, to highlight the community members, businesses, organizations. We're also a veteran-owned event startup ourselves, and our events is, we like to be creative, we like to lead the way in being creative and providing a fun atmosphere that includes various activities and, and all things to, to really highlight the vibrancy of, of the city. So here's a quick example of some of the things that, and I think I've, I recognize a couple of faces here that had been to the events before, so thank you. So here are our numbers for this year, all 16 events that are contracted. We partnered with the City of Lacey. In total, we highlighted 157 number of vendors and local organizations that are all part of the community, and in 72 total event hours, we saw that we were very pleased with the total sales that were generated at, at the night market, and we estimate the total attendance to be just short of 50,000, and that also comes with a healthy amount of social media engagement that's, that's reach, share, likes, follows, and we believe that that number really highlighted the, the event and also showcased the, the missions behind the City of Lacey. As Wesley mentioned, we, we kicked off this, this partnership in mid-April, and it took us some time to get, get it dialed in, get it organized. We had to get familiar with the layout and the structures and, and really understand what the community is looking for. What is, what is the fun time for the communities to participate, to engage? And, and as you can see throughout the numbers, as, as more events happen, we, we started to see more and more interest for local businesses and organizations that, that wanted to participate. And here's a quick breakdown of the, the types of vendors and organizations that we had. A lot of, we were able to highlight a lot of craft, craft vendors, clothing advertisers, organizations, nonprofits, that were able to come out, get some exposure, and for the, for the food portion, it's something that we look to, we look to highlight more in, in future events. So here's another quick, quick breakdown of all the things that you might see at the events. And as mentioned, our total attendance is just under 50,000 this year. It was very, it's very in line with how our projections of, it took us a few months to get it, get the ducks on the road, get it dialed in, and now we're confident at the place with the momentum that we were, were able to roll this into any future events and continue to generate those, those high number, high results, and ultimately benefiting everybody in the city. So some, some fun facts about, about these, the events is that we, we noticed a high number of, almost 70% of attendees are parents, and they bring their kids to the events, and just 150% they, of the attendees come back from multiple, multiple events, and, and we noticed that just, just over 33% of the attendees are residents from the City of Lacey. The age demographic of all the attendees is pretty much in line with how we had projected as well. We saw most, the most crowd between 25 to, to 45. That's, that's about the, how, how we project the events to be. Moving forward, we definitely like to look into how to be more inclusive and increase activities that are, that are more welcoming and in line with the other age groups to really make this super, super inclusive and welcoming for everybody. And here's a quick breakdown of our, our total sales. We, as mentioned, we started the event so a little bit slow, and as we progressed into all the future events, we, we saw that number drastically increase. Where, we like to think that we're getting more trust and we're building more relationships with the local community, the local businesses, organizations, and, and folks are trusting us to spend their hard-earned money at our events and, and with the local businesses. So across 16 events, we averaged just over 275,000, and, and we're very pleased with that number because if you really break it down, that happened in 72 hours, so we're, we're really happy with that numbers, and I think that number will continue to increase as we build more themed activities and create something even more for, for the future, future years. And these are some of the highlights for, for the activities that, and why people love these, these type of events. The most common questions I get from the community is, when they first hear about these events, is what is a night market? And we want to make sure that it's more than just coming to a place to spend your money and then you go home. So we like to include different activities, DJs, musicians, not only quality vendors, but also activities like you can get. There's, there's permanent jewelry services, there's tattoo services, there's all kinds of different activities. We're looking at petting zoos, we're, we're looking to add just a variety of different things that's fun, and that gets, gets the juice pumping for, for the community. And social media is, is our bread and butter. We like to think that we're very proactive and lead the way in, in creating content and, and using modern technology, including, including a lot of AI in our, in our systems and, and strategies to really get the word out there, and, and I believe it's, it's been effective. As, as you can see, from the time that we agreed to the partnership all the way to the end of the event, we're just under a million, 1 million in total reach within, within the surrounding 75-mile radius. So the total reach, we're extremely pleased with that number because it's not nationwide. That number is within the 75-mile radius of Lacey, of the depot, so we know that it's getting a lot of attention and just, and we will definitely look to continue to build that momentum to, to keep that, keep that, keep the fun going. Any, any questions so far? If anybody has any? So I also want to highlight the, I know we just showed this, the number for sales. Those numbers does not include the permanent vendors that are currently at the depot already, so we, we definitely expect the number for sales to be even higher if we include those numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
I was curious what the 2025 schedule is going to be. Is it going to be the same April through December timeframe, or are you looking at something more frantic?
That is, that is a great question. I, that would be for Wesley to, to answer.
I mean, if it's, if it's up to, if it's up to, if it's up to you, would you go?
So, thanks, sir. If it was up to me, I would definitely maintain the same schedule because, as Wesley mentioned, keeping it on a, on a consistent basis on a Friday was, I believe, was detrimental to the success of this event, and the, my initial thought when, when we had started, started to put the puzzles together was, especially during the summer months, you're competing with a lot of major events on Saturdays and Sundays within the region. You're looking at the Harbor Day Fest- at the Harbor Day Festival, you're looking at the Art Walk, the County Fair kicks off. So Fridays, in my opinion, just from our experience, has worked out really well. It allows folks to kick off their, kind of like a stop before you kick off your weekends. We see a lot of folks that make the stop before they go home. So I would, if it was up to me, I would keep it the same.
I was one of them. Yeah, go ahead.
So as you went through the markets, obviously, they got bigger as you got later on. Do you have, do you think you can start from that where you ended, rather than going, you know, rather than starting at the bottom there again and working up? Do you think that's your starting place for next year? That you can keep it at that high level that you were toward the end?
I hope so. I'm just kidding. I definitely think we can, just because we've really took the time this year. And our focus this year from the start has been about building trust and relationship with the community. I just think at the core of it, without those components, you don't really have an event that's sustainable. So partnering with the City of Lacey has been a huge stepping stone for us. In a sense, it legitimized this event, understanding that it's, the city backs this event, and all the safety protocols, we're all meant to make this happen. So, and on top of that, if you look at the screen now, we did gain a huge amount of audience and following for the events here. We ended the year with a bang, and we definitely expect to open a new season with the same momentum. Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
You may have mentioned this, but where does your data come from?
Which, which part? So for social media, we go off of, we go off of Meta, the Meta Business Suite, and the engagements are all within our accounts. And then as far as sales, we collect the sales data from the vendors. So that helps us understand where are we lacking in what areas, whether that's vendor placement, or that tells us where we need to improve and whether, if a vendor is a good fit for this event.
So you're having vendors fill out surveys at the end of events?
Correct. So anytime a vendor signs up to participate, to apply to our events, we go through a pretty lengthy screening process. We want to make sure that it's, not only does it align with the city's mission, and we want to make sure that it's kid-friendly. We want to make sure there's no profanity, there's nothing crazy within the businesses. We have an online software that tracks all of the datas, so that tells us where we need to improve and where we might need to move the vendors to generate better opportunity.
And one final question about the data. You said that 33% of participants or attendees at the events were from Lacey. Where did you derive that statistic?
We arrive at that statistics with a lot of online surveys, online surveys, and also some, majority of events will have, will have a dot survey that attendees can go, they pick up, they pick up a sticker, and then they just drop it to where that category falls. We'll definitely look to collect better data as we approach the future seasons. But we believe that's, it's been accurate so far, and we can definitely improve on collecting those datas, but.
So it's a mix of AI and old-fashioned using stickers. That's great.
So to be clear, there's no AI in data. We collect all of that ourselves.
The outreach piece.
Outreach piece, for sure. But yeah, as far as data, it's all collected through surveys, and we go through all of them to list it out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And this may sound like a silly question, but my brain keeps saying, what does Sway stand for? Is it an acronym?
No, so it's not an acronym. It's, it literally just, it was an urban dictionary term I had looked, I had seen 10 years ago. It just means to be adventurous, to have fun. And I wanted to create the same definition and same drive behind the events. And part of the, part of the strategy was to get people to guess what that means.
I'm glad I asked the question.
So I was one of the people who drove by on a Friday night and saw it and stopped. You guys had some really, really good vendors, and the kids were, you know, dancing to the DJ and all the kind of fun things. So really, a lot of fun. Then I drove by one night and I saw a Dick's Burger truck.
Yes, sir.
Was that, was that you? You got that there?
It was through the help, with the help of Wesley, to coordinate a lot of the efforts getting, getting some of the bigger names out there. Once we were able to connect that, connect those dots, we, I was very quick to build that relationship to make sure that, to let them know that we want them here.
Very popular, too.
I did not expect them to be, I did not see that result right away. So it was awesome to see that. And just from talking with the community members, the feedback was they were just mind-blown that they're even here. So I kind of looked into it, and it's true. They don't bring their food trucks just to anywhere.
No, they don't.
It's very hard. I had to kiss a lot of babies, too. So I'm really glad that the City of Lacey is on their radar. And we've established a really good relationship to bring them back for more events next year, and hopefully lines won't be as long.
Yeah, I went to that event, and it was, it was like 50 people deep at all times.
Oh, yeah.
It was crazy.
I didn't stick around for a burger. I tried. It didn't work out. The wake up, the two hours.
Good job.
And I couldn't have done it without the city's help as well.
So let's go over your goals for 2025, then we'll ask any other questions at the end.
And real quick, just to finish, a couple of last slides, is that we pride ourselves in building that trust and relationships, like I mentioned. And we want to make sure that we're empowering the participating vendors and organizations as well. So we have, we have one of the lowest vendor fees throughout the whole region. And we provide resources, workshops for vendors that participate in our events, so they have an opportunity to grow their business and grow their organization, and be open to the resources that we utilize as a brand, so they get to have the same thing as well. So here's a little bit more activities here. And to really go through really quick, these are just the average number for per event. I definitely want to highlight some of the visitor testimonials. So as mentioned, a lot of the attendees are parents, so they get to bring their children to an event where they can have fun. And we have activities and opportunities for not only the kids have a blast, but the parents also can walk away with something fun. So that was really rewarding for us to see that it's bringing people together. And testimonials from vendors has been, has been positive as well. We feature a few vendors that comes from, comes from a micro-business perspective. And now, after a year with us, they, they're closer to opening up a storefront for their own business and brand. So it's, we like to think we're a platform to help those micro businesses and small businesses to have opportunity for big exposure. Also, the ones that are not advanced with the modern technology, the social medias, those are something that we also help them do. And in results, in return, we see them thrive. Now, our goals for 2025 is, one is going to be to increase the total attendance. We were satisfied with how, towards, how we end the year. But as you mentioned, we wanted to make sure that we start off next year on the same note and not fall back again, which I don't think we will. We also wanted to expand, expand the reach to a further region. So we want to also promote overnight stays. We want to promote the tours, more tourism with the City of Lacey instead of just to local residents to come out and then go home. We want to make sure that we boost repeat attendance. As you see, there was 46% that comes back to multiple events. So we definitely want to keep that, keep those numbers up. And also, that tells us we're on the right track because the community is having fun We want to enhance entertainment offerings. So this year was also a big learning year for us to take on this first year of the contract. And now that we have a clear understanding of what we're looking to do and how we can, what kind of entertainments we can feature, we'll definitely look to bring out more activities, crazier things. That's safe, of course. And more family-friendly features and activities in that arena. And ultimately, we want to collaborate with more community organizations. Towards the end of the year, we collaborated with the Lacey Maker Space. So those, we want to continue to highlight those local city organizations in the City of Lacey to lift everybody up. And I want to give a quick, just a quick final thought is that we're, as a team, we're super grateful for this opportunity to work with the City of Lacey. We're an event startup and a small business ourselves. So to have the opportunity to bring something fun, exciting for the city is really awesome. And I want to, I definitely want to give a heartfelt gratitude to the whole City of Lacey team. That's economic development, the Parks and Recs was huge for us. Lacey PD looked out for us. The Fire Department was, everyone was, had hands on this. So it was really awesome to have, to really feel supported by the city and for us to be able to continue to be innovative without any restraints and to have the trust from the city to create something fun and safe for the community. So we're super grateful, and our whole team is thrilled, and we're excited to kick off more, more fun things next year. Yes, sir?
All right. People don't know, I was here quite early when you showed up, so, you know, and you brought the energy and all that stuff. But I want you to know that this council is, you know, we're, the majority of us are business owners, too. You know, I mean, many of us are veterans as well.
Yes, sir. I looked into your background.
Well, so, you know, it's important that people know that about you as well, right?
Thank you.
But, you know, I just want to go through, what I took out of your presentation was an average of 3,000 people a night, raising $17,000 per night that wouldn't normally be in our, in our local economy, right? $3,800 per hour and $6 per person per night, which sounds like pretty cheap entertainment for something that's, you know, really safe. Zero emergency calls, right?
Incident-free, zero calls.
So it's a fun, you know, high energy, people get to know their neighbors. It's awesome what you're doing here. And, you know, I could, I know, I speak for the council, we all support this 100%. I mean, the numbers speak for themselves. It's a great example of local economic vitality. And other than that, it put, you know, 900,000 hits on the internet, I'm drawing a blank on it, but that's putting Lacey on the map. And that's what it's all about, right? So getting involved in your community, getting to know your neighbor, and creating a home, not just a place to live.
Councilor Dunning?
I just want to say the most impressive thing to me really is that 33% came from Lacey, but what that means is 66, 67% came from outside of Lacey. To highlight Lacey, and that really just is, you know, exactly aligns with the mission, with us trying to define who we are and where we're going. And so I, you know, just thank you for what you're doing, and I think we all want to see this grow as big as it can, so.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah. So for someone who lives really close and got to walk there on a regular basis, I really appreciate it. And for a long time, we've had a vision of what that depot district could look like. And what it has always been missing is some sort of ongoing activity to bring people there to understand what's going on. And I agree with you 100% that it needs to be like, people know it's every first and, you know, third Friday of the month, so everyone knows the consistency going forward. And so I hope that continues, that like, we know in our community that this night market's going to happen twice a month, starting, you know, as early as possible, as early as feasibly possible to go out throughout the year, because I think that consistency is super important. And to see all the families there was just, you know, and all the kids and everyone having fun. Like, we don't have that many events in our community that we can come together on a regular basis and that you know there's going to be there. And yeah, there's great, there's good food. This doesn't include all the food trucks that we've had there as well. And to see so much activity right in an area where you're not used to seeing a lot of activity is really important. That's a really good spot, you know? And we've been saying that, man, this is a really good spot. If we could just get something going on a regular basis to highlight the depot. And micro, you know, entrepreneurism, that's all what we're about here in Lacey. And so I wish you the best going forward. You have our sport. We'd love to see this happen, you know, as consistently as possible, for as many dates as possible. I think it could be, you know, I do think it could be something that could be popular almost year-round. And then my last question to you is, is there anything that we could do better on our end? Is there anything that we could do to help support you that?
I think so far, I mean, the whole experience has been just awesome. Like, we, anything that we need, the city is quick to answer. Wesley is right there. He checks in pretty often. And the biggest thing is that having the trust by the city as well to try new things, because we wanted to, we want to make sure there's activities and not just come here, spend money, and go home. So the city has, trusts us with any ideas we have, we've had, we throw out there. And we know, we know it's new. It's going to take a little bit of time, but we're, I think we're ahead of the schedule a little bit, and we can continue to innovate, try new things, and to see what brings attention out here. So for future opportunities, we'll look to partner with more bigger brands and.
I think you have a great opportunity there, being on the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, too. You know, there's, I think that's underutilized as well, and there could be, you know, maybe some opportunities for some fun things that are happening on trail during your events, too, maybe down back with some, I don't know. There's.
We're always open for ideas.
Always open for that. But the kids, like, what do you do on a Friday in your, you know, 18 to 25, you know, in this community? There's not a lot to do. And that's why, it's one of the reasons why I think it's been so popular and will continue to be popular as long as we have regular hours and time.
I'll just say, because you brought it up, the, you know, things that we could do as this gets bigger. I mean, it's already getting pretty big, and it has two really busy roads where, you know, people sometimes like to drive really fast. So I think one thing we could potentially do is just make sure that there's safety, you know, perimeters around for a lot of kids running around, a lot of pets running around. So that might be just something we could look into, just to make it a little more, a little more friendly for the people who are walking.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
I got a couple more, but thank you, Jason, and thank you, Wesley, and thank you, council.
Yeah, we'll see you there. We'll see you there.
I just want to wrap up on a little bit, too, just to kind of draw some strings together because, you know, this all, originally it started with the efforts of the depot vision in process, and kind of how do we activate this site? We started with the food trucks, and slowly added the market, and things been building over several years, but you're starting to see it starting to take home, especially with this last year with the night market idea. I think switching to that Friday night has been very successful, as was mentioned by Jason. So I do want to thank the work of Jason, Wesley, and the entire team. As you know, Jason mentioned, it takes many departments and staff working together to try to make this better for the community. That meets a lot of the goals that we've shared, and the council has adopted and championed. Next on my city manager report, and keep them with the economic development theme, I'll invite Wesley back up. He sat down a little too quick. As we know, economic development takes on many factors. A lot of times, we just think about the direct business recruitment, but there's many factors and functions that involve economic development from workforce, business support, retention, and expansion. So Wesley's going to give a year-end report of some of the economic development activities over the past year and provide the overall update.
Yeah. So good evening again. For the record, my name is Wesley Nguyen, Economic Development Coordinator. Thank you again for inviting me, city manager, to talk about the economic development work at the city. Tonight, I would just share a work update as well as some initiative as it relates to economic development. So this is the agenda for this presentation. So this is the agenda for this presentation, a little bit of background. And then these activities for, that we did in 2024. A lot of this work centered around the council work plan in 2022, 2024. Specifically, the vibrant and diverse economy priority to enhance economic workforce and incubating projects and programs to help create and support a strong, diverse and growing communities that is resilient and provides a variety of different regulations and workforce opportunity for the community members. And I will go over into each of these activities in the following slides. Okay, but first, some background and kind of the state of Lacey economy. We hired a consultant in 2021 to do a market study update. And this is some of the data that he discovered. I understand this is 2021 data, but the, the change to 2024 has not been significant. And we are working with, we just, our city manager just signed a contract with a new economic development consultant. That we start working on updating these data in 2025. And so I just wanted to share that. But as a whole, our, our economy, we have about 1,500 businesses. And these are some of the different sectors that these businesses are involved in. Obviously, our strongest, our biggest sectors is retail with 27%, healthcare is 21%. Together they make up about 48% of the economy. Wholesale, warehouse, government comprise about seven, seven and three, which add up to 10%. But they are a big employers, almost 7,000 employees in those two sector alone. Well, speaking of employment, the study also indicate in total, private, private business and public sectors generates about 23,470 employment jobs opportunities. Lacey successfully expand the job market to 3,630 from 2015 to 2021. There are, and then in the green triangle, rectangle there, there are 4,000 wholesale and warehouse worker jobs. 3,860 retail jobs in the blue sector. And healthcare, there are about 2,370 jobs in orange. And then the government job again generates about 2,080 jobs in the navy color box. So these numbers have changed a little bit in 2024. And again, our new consultant will be looking at these data and we're updating these data for our strategic plan for 2025 coming up. And then just some trends that was discovered when we did the, the market study. The job market expanded 18, almost 19% in Lacey compared to Thurston County, 6.5% in that same period. And in Washington State, in that same period was only 3.6, 3.1%. Again, in that period, as you noticed, we had a lot of new warehouses built in Hawksbury area as well as healthcare. So those are the two big sector during that time. So these are the strength and constraint in the seat of Lacey that was discovered in the market study. Most of these still hold true. Economic development staff, myself basically, are working to amplify some of the strength and reduce or remove the constraints. With few large sites now in our city, we are look, we are looking at more smaller lots, smaller parcels that have been filled. As you see, new projects are coming on Britton Parkway, south of Hogan Bay Town Center. There are some spots that's been coming through pre-sets and getting designs. And so those projects will be coming up online fairly soon. We have new hotels that are coming in some of the new sites as well. And then we will be talking about workforce shortage in a little bit in later slides. Housing shortage, obviously, we're, as the CD are working on that with the middle, middle housing initiative that Jennifer is working on. And then the last item I just want to mention about the constraint is the lack of a strong community identity and characters. I think that some of the stuff that we just did with the night market is one example of how we could strengthen that identity with building a night market that kind of give an image of what Lacey is about. So that is a work in progress as we talk about for the next couple of years about branding and identity making and place making, and those things are in the work. So now the work that we did for 2024. So the graph on the left, the blue is 2014, the orange is 2023, sorry, 2024 versus 2023. These are new business, mostly they're brick and mortar business that are new to the seat of Lacey. In, by the end of quarter three, we have about 94 new business that are either licensed or open up in the seat of Lacey. Now, this is a little bit slower paced in 2023. In total, in the same three quarters in 2023, there were 99 new businesses. So about six business less than it was last year. And then the graph on the right, the pie chart illustrate the type of sector these new business fall into. Forty-five of the new bus, 45% of the new business are professional service type business. The therapist, counseling, law firm, financial service are in those, in that category. Retail both, retail service and retail made of about 28% of the new businesses. And then lastly, healthcare, about 15 of new businesses, 15% of new businesses are in healthcare sector. Business retention and expansion. So in this particular exercise, doing council priority for supporting existing business within a community to help them grow and maintain, remain local. We implement several approaches to reaching local business community. In our business walk initiative, we, we visit over 50 businesses in a variety of different commercial centers in our city. The goal with these types of business walk is to maintain ongoing dialogue with these businesses. Their business owner that we encounter with, their business manager, operators that we talk with, clerks at the, at the front of the, the stores. So variety of different people that we engage with. And then some of these engagement, we also provide resources to help them understand the type of trainings that's available as well as the type of activities CDs are doing to support small business. We also did extensive business engagement with the business neighboring Mabel Court. I visit businesses before Mabel Court opened. And then I visit about 25 more businesses after Mabel Court opened. And to see what are some of the challenges with these businesses. Some are small businesses, some are big block businesses. Not on this slide, but our, our crew team, Sergeant Landwell and I attend the regional retail deaf every month at the city of, city of Olympia City Hall, in which we work with big block business and their, what they call asset protection team to see what are some of the challenges with deaf recoveries and, and dealing with deaf. So we work, so our LPD, I wanted to thank them for their efforts in reducing some of that challenge. Other events and meetings that we support to engage with business leaders. We have ribbon cutting events, opening events that the mayor and the deputy mayor attend. We attend Thurston Chamber events. We attend Lacey Chamber events to meet local businesses as well. The next slide is business recruitment. You know, this, this is a hard thing, but what I want to share is that my previous CED director have told me is that business recruitment is a team sport. We need tenants that want to be there. We need property owners that have the right buildings or the right lot size with the right zoning. And lastly, we, we need to have an infrastructure ready to be able to support that business, whether it be power or road, water. That is also very important. Over the year, just last month, I just finished my four year anniversary at the seat of Lacey. And I've talked to real estate and property owner, businesses and see how we could support them. And and then recently, I, I, last year I talked to a property owner that owns the vacant ride a on Martin Way. You know, he told me, he have tenants that are interested in renting that. I'm like, oh, how can I help you get them there? Well, he's like, well, the tenant wants to make some tenants improvement I'm not ready to invest in. So therefore the tenant, the prospective tenant was like pulled out of that opportunity. Because the, the property owner was not ready to make that change. And so I'm just sharing that story to say that they are variable. It comes when recruiting a, a new business. Over the year, I talked with In-N-Out Burger when I heard that they're coming into state of Washington. And I talked to their business developer out of Oregon and email and call them and share our community with them. I heard that we need an entertainment place. So I looked up and called Round One, which is a entertainment place out of California. They work and open up entertainment center, mostly always inside a, a traditional mall. But I reached out to them and talked to them about our South Center Mall and told them about the opportunities. But at the end of the day, their business model is non-negotiable. So they, they were not interested in the seat of Lacey. But we have a dialogue with them. And then, you know, one of the business I, I put up here is the DBAT business. Like I mentioned, you know, I've been with the CD for four years. And about two and a half years ago, one of the staff here at the city, she has a son that plays baseball. And she'd take him to camp in, I think Florida and, and there she talked. And then she came back and, and we chatted and she told me about this place called DBAT. I'm like, what's DBAT? And so she told me about this place. So I was like, so I looked them up and they're based out of Texas. I sent them email, I called them, they responded. And then two years later, I've learned that they are building a DBAT here in Lacey. This is the fourth DBAT in the state of Washington. They have one in Yakima, they have one in Bothell, they have another one, I forgot where. But Lacey would be the fourth DBAT, but where kid can come and practice infielding, bat hitting. And, and then coaches can also use the facility to, to measure kids' performance. And so I, you know, it's, it's a long process when it comes to recruitment. I just wanted to share that little story where a kid will be able to use this facility, hopefully this year in 2025. They are building a 3,700 square, 37,000 square foot indoor facility here. And I believe it's off of Evelyn. So look out for that in Hawksbury. Another investment that we do to support small business is business training. So in this regard, we invested to, there's an EDC about $80,000 last year for business training and business, small business support. And our return on investment of that 80,000 is that we have about 115 Lacey business and entrepreneurs participating in about 10 different type of training. And they're listed right here for you. What I can say is that a lot of these trainings are free to those who take the programs. The funding are either through state funding as well as the seat of Lacey funding through our investment. So for, for entrepreneurs and small business owner here in Lacey, they're, they're welcome to come and take these classes. Been, been offered here at Thurston EDC. About 35% of the participants are by park business owners or entrepreneurs. Just wanted to share that data. And then workforce training, we definitely have a shortage of workforce. And so we've been trying to figure out how to stand up a workforce training program. We've been in conversation with Washington Retail Association to do a customer service training program to help with retail industry. And so that's one thing we've been working with them on. Another thing where I, I was interested to try to figure out how to do a training with Lehigh and the folks that are at Mabel Court. And so we're still working out how to do that training. A lot of, a lot of the resident at Mabel Court are necessarily ready for workforce training. So we might, we might be looking at more of a introduction to workforce, introduction to job and introduction to work. And so that's something we're looking into with workforce solution out of Thurston Chamber. Just to highlight one training that we did complete in 2024 is the Ajax partnership that can, that did a pre-apprenticeship manufacturing training at the Lacey Maker Space where they graduated 12 participants in that program. That program, again, it took about two and a half, three years, Rick. When I first started, we started a conversation with Ajax. Ajax is a, a training facility out of King County. So when we talked to them three years ago, they just mainly work in King County and they have a program in Yakima. So it took us three years to be able to engage with them, to get them to come down to Thurston County. And now they have a office in the Lacey, Lacey Maker Space and are recruiting trainees into the program. Lacey Maker Space. I'm pretty sure you're aware of this place. I don't want to go too much in detail about this. But yeah, so in 2024, we invested in about 200,000. But that's, that's only a little bit of how much we have invested in them in total. You know, they opened in 2019. In total, we probably invested more than a 1.2 million in that project to support the operations. And not including CD managers time as well as staff time for that work. But, you know, in 2024, the Maker Space had organized 114 classes, 357 people participated in those classes. If you ever get a chance to go there, they have 250 members using all the high tech equipments that they have there. Advancing their skills as well as using the, the equipment to make things that they could potentially sell in the market that don't exist. So it's a quite interesting place. So that's the Maker Space. The other thing that we kind of touched on a little bit with Rick mentioned is the, the. The other thing that we kind of touched on a little bit with Rick mentioned is the, the Lacey Food Truck Depot. Again, this started about four years ago, kind of a, a lunchtime where people can come, get their lunch during lunch break, and then the truck would leave. To now, we have about seven trucks, six trucks that are there prominently and serve throughout the day. And so it's been a very successful project. I, I get called from other CDs jurisdiction asking me about how we put it together, as well as I've been getting called from food truck vendors. I recently, a lady called me and she wanted to know we have any more space because she have a, a business and the landlord had increased her, her rent, so she couldn't stay there anymore. So she are, she's thinking of changing her business model to a food truck business so that she doesn't have to pay rent. And so I'm working with her to find a, a solution to help her sell her products here at the seat of Lacey. So yeah. Other things that we do at Economic Development, we engage in, in partnership. Like I mentioned, we, we do a monthly meeting at the retail staff, regional meeting. We engage in the refugees, we settle them in quarterly meetings. We, I'm, I'm, I'm involved in variety of these different meetings, including the Thurston Green Business Monthly Meeting, which I have tomorrow. But yeah. So work ahead. So this is some of the work that we're looking at to do, had been approved by council to go forward. Do a feasibility study on a permanent food truck location in this year. Improve the food truck location by looking to add ADA compliance to the area. Continue to work on the night market and expand it. Continue to support the Maker Space, looking at how we can support the sustainability aspect of operation. And then lastly, support the, the Economic Development Initiative that we, that we hire a consultant to work on. And these are the different partners that we work with throughout, that I engage with, not just regionally, but also state like the WIDA, the Washington Economic Development Association. And so, yeah, that's pretty much in my presentation, so thank you very much. I apologize for the long presentation and thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. At, at the food truck depot, obviously the, the rent for those trucks is very low. Are we requiring them to be open?
We require them to be open four days minimum.
And are we monitoring that? Because I know, there's just one there that doesn't seem to ever be open.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I'm just wondering, are they just using it for the cheap rent as a place to park it? And which is, you know, a concern because obviously there's other trucks that we can have that.
The, the food truck you mentioned, there was a problem with his business. His business had a fire and he, and, and so there was a difficulty in that period, so. But he's coming back in January and will be opening up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Wesley. And I just want to also articulate, you know, think council thinks back, you know, ten years or so. You know, a lot of our focus on economic development is really matching with brokers and permitting process and, you know, business recruitment. And then with the added, the work of Wesley and George Forum, you start seeing that there's a many layers of economic development that programs develop and has many more tentacles in terms of reaching out to the business community, both locally to make sure they have support and opportunities as, and, as well as reaching out externally to try to bring new business into the community to provide services that the community here needs. And so it takes time, it takes effort, it takes relationship building. You heard that from Jason as well, in terms of the might mark. So all these pieces come together to kind of make an overall effort that really hasn't been here in, in the local jurisdiction point, spent the EDC level. But now we're in concert with EDC and coordinating and partnering with our regional partners to make this effort and also focus on the Lacey specifics. So I want to thank Wesley for the presentation and the overview and thank council for that leadership and support of these efforts over the years to build the program that continue to evolve over time.
Just one quick thing. You, you were talking about the, the Lacey more permanent location for the food truck depot. Is there, is there a timeframe on that? I like, like, how much?
Talking about the feasibility study or the actual relocation?
Yeah, the feasibility and relocation. I, I know that, you know, I guess what my, my question or concern is, do we have a couple of years on that or are we talking about eighteen to twenty-four months?
It's going to be a little bit of opportunity driven on a couple of years. So as you recall, when we first started looking at the food truck depot, we're looking at initially a site, but we decided to set it up in the current location as a temporary idea to see, to test the market and see what, what could be built out of it. And also activate the site and make awareness of the museum project as well as the depot building itself. So as it's gained success, now we're looking to do that feasibility study. Okay, what area in that, what location in that particular area would be more suitable for a permanent location in the, with the idea that at some point the museum's going to be developed there. And so we're going to have to make those decisions, how to continue to operate the, the food truck depot as well as the market activities. So this feasibility study will be happening this year to kind of look at several different options and tell us what options those are and what the cost is, so we can start planning for the future. So when we are ready to go forward in the museum, we have a plan in place to how to relocate, so we have minimal disruption.
And we're just kind of looking at that same general area.
Yep. Yeah, because we want to try to keep that civic activity in there, that, because that's creating that identity for that neighborhood. It's also with the, a lot of traffic goes through there, it's great visibility and then connectivity to the surrounding neighborhood, so they have a, a, a place of identity.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, and I have more tonight. And then this is another topic I want to invite Jenny Bowers field up to kind of give an overview and a primer on a really cool initiative that we're undertaking this year. It's something that I think multiple folks here at the city have seen its place in terms of a community academy and seen the value of that has done in other communities. And so we wanted to bring this forward as, and we'll talk to council about it and council kind of gave the, the go-ahead. And so we're, we're going to be able to highlight that or launch that community academy this year. And Jenny's going to give an overview of what that's going to look like and some of the expectations.
Well, that was a great introduction. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for just giving me a little bit of time to share this exciting program. So the Lacey Community Academy, we really want to give community members an opportunity to have a behind-the-scenes look at how city government is run, what it takes to put programs in place and maintaining services to the community. We have a great program that's similar within our police department. So Chief Staff does a great job with their community academy for the police departments. This, this is going to be similar, but just a broader look at each department within the city. Another goal that we, that we identified was really wanting to create an, an environment of informed community members who can serve as ambassadors or champions when they're with their friends or family or at local businesses where just, like I said, more informed, know, understand a little bit better of how a city operates. This is also going to be a great initial step for folks who are interested in volunteering on boards and commissions, give a, a good introduction to how a city operates. Then when they come to a, a board or commission, they're more well-versed in how that runs or even possibly people who might be interested in serving on the Lacey City Council one day. In looking at how to create this program, we did some research on some other successful programs. City of North Bend, Washington has a, a program that they've started just a couple of years ago, City of Prescott, Arizona, and City of Sanford, Florida. These are all some examples that have some successful programs that have been up and running. And a program, the overview for the Lacey program, this is just a quick snapshot of what ours will entail, but a six-week program, it's going to be starting at the end of February. Ours will include fifteen participants. One of the requirements is that they must live in Lacey or in the UGA. It'll be, like I said, six weeks, every Thursday from six to seven thirty PM. It will run February twentieth through the twenty-seventh, will provide some light refreshments. We just posted the application on January second and it's already full and beyond full. So we're taking fifteen participants, we have thirty-one applications already. And the applications are just really encouraging, everybody's really excited for the opportunity and really eager to learn more about the city. So the application period is unfortunately already closed. So we do have a great pool of applicants to look at already, so we're going to be taking the next couple of weeks to go through those and moving forward with fifteen, possibly twenty. We, we might expand it just a little bit. We want to start small with this pilot program for this year, just as we kind of get our footing and see what we have the capacity for in each department, so.
Are you doing it on a first come, first served on those applications or are you actually going to?
Well, probably, we'll go through and take a look. We want to make sure that we're capturing a diverse selection of interests and backgrounds and things like that. So, yeah, we'll go through and, and take a look. But this is an example of some weekly sessions. You may have seen a calendar invite come through for February twentieth, so that's going to be our kickoff session. We'd love to have any and all of you there who are able to come. It'd be a great chance for our attendees to meet their city council. We can have some fun, interactive games and, you know, engagement opportunities with you all. But that's the idea, is to just keep these sessions engaging and fun, interactive. We're going to try to stay away from long presentations and things like that. So hopefully some tours and meeting in different areas of city hall, maybe at the shop, some, just to give people a good look at how the city of Lacey is operated. So we'll have our Get to Know Your City kind of kickoff meeting and then we'll be meeting with Public Works and Community and Economic Development, Parks, Culture and Recreation, our Police Department and our Finance Department, where we can take a closer look at how we create our budget and maybe some details on taxes and clarify misunderstandings there. So it should be great. We're really excited to get it kicked off. There's going to be a lot of conversations and planning happening over the next couple of months, so we look forward to seeing you all on February twentieth. And are there any questions?
Any questions? So I know Tom Water does Academy as well, but is this kind of more like a, a miniature Leadership Thurston County? Because Leadership Thurston County has a program as well, but it's more kind of county-wide, know your county.
Sure.
So is this, is this kind of going after that same?
Um, I don't, I mean, we didn't really have a Leadership Thurston County in mind, but I think it's just that kind of more centralized on our local government. Just a deeper dive, really trying to educate our community members on how their local government works and identify, you know, any misunderstandings or things like that that people just don't quite understand. I think even as council members, you get on council, sometimes they're like, oh, wow, there's a lot more that goes into things than what I thought. So from, from a community member's perspective, that could be really valuable for them, too.
And one distinction between like Leadership Thurston is Leadership's a much more robust and much more bigger program. They're looking at, you know, the nonprofit services, the private sector business, the healthcare, education, as well as local government. It's a piece of it, where this is really focused on what local government in your community is and to help get people better informed and engagement strategy to create potentially people to be able to spread that information throughout their circles in the community, but also the interest in potentially service for advisory boards as well as other aspects of helping, you know, working within the city as well.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I think this is great, because when I first got on council, this is the first thing I did was like, I wanted to see how the city worked, you know? So I went toured with, Scott set some tours up with Public Works. I went and I tried to find out anything and everything possible. The one thing about Leadership Thurston County or whatever, that's five thousand dollars. This, I'm pretty sure is next to nothing.
This is free.
Yeah. And, and people get to get involved in their city. They get to learn about their city and, and then they're not really asking the elementary questions, you know, of how this works or why we do it this way or whatever. And they might bring good ideas to, to the forefront and better way to build a mousetrap, if you will. I, I love this. I think it's awesome. I think everybody should get involved in their city.
Absolutely. So with, with the level of interest that you've received and, and the limited slots, are you looking at the possibility of doing something later in the year or, or somehow?
To be determined. That's a great question. I mean, yeah, we, we were, I was surprised at the quick response. One of the questions in the application was, where did you hear about it? So a lot of Lacey life, a lot from, a few from social media, and then another, we saw another onslaught after the Olympian picked it up as well through a press release. So people are reading the things that are going out from Lacey, so that's good. But yeah, we'll reevaluate after, after this six-week sessions over. We'll kind of go through challenges and successes and plan for the future, so.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We're looking forward to hearing more about the program as it goes in, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and thank you, Jenny. Thank you very much. And next we have a bid award on the agenda or on the city manager report, and I want to invite Ryan Jewell, our utilities engineer, up to give an overview of the bid for the four hundred pressure zone transmission main project.
Thank you, Rick. And good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. As Rick mentioned, my name is Ryan Jewell. I am a utility engineer in our Water Resources Department. And I've come before you tonight to request a motion to award the four hundred pressure zone transmission main project. The four hundred pressure zone transmission main project will install approximately thirty-two-hundred linear feet of twelve-inch ductile iron main between McAllister Court and Chatham Drive along Pacific Avenue. This water main will increase system redundancy and improve transmission to and from the Stalacoom Reservoir. This improved transmission will be particularly important should we ever need to take the Hawksbury Reservoir offline for maintenance or repairs. As you can see on this map, Pacific Ave here is also listed as SR five-ten. This segment of Pacific Avenue is within SR five-ten, which is Wash Dot right-of-way. As such, we had to coordinate with Wash Dot throughout the design of this project. They had some design and construction requirements that they included, one of which is night work. We were concerned about that due to the proximity to residential neighborhoods, but they were unmoving in their insistence for night work. So what we've done is mailed out letters to all residents and businesses within three hundred feet of the work zone, so there are no surprises once we start breaking ground on this project. So this project is Lacey Contract PW twenty-two-three twenty-five. It received seven bids ranging from approximately one point four million dollars to two point two million dollars. The low bidder was the Western United Civil Group at one million, four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. We anticipate work beginning in March of twenty-twenty-five and lasting seventy workdays. And with that, I would like to respectfully request a motion to award Lacey Contract PW twenty-two-three twenty-five to the low bidder, Western United Civil Group, in the amount of one million, four hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Councilor.
So I noticed there's what, six total bids and the engineer's estimate was one point nine-nine million, so almost two million dollars. And the, the winning bid was one point four, so it looks like we got our money's worth.
We did, and we are lucky. Western United Civil Group also was awarded another City of Lacey project, so we saw some dollars saved on their mobilization costs and some other things since they're already being in town.
Well, next to them being from Lacey, that's the only thing that could be better, right?
So they're going with an iron water main?
Yes.
Why would, why would he go with an iron water main over PVC?
Tends to have a longer service life, require a little bit less maintenance. And then Wash Dot also prefers to see those ductile iron water mains in their right-of-way.
Okay.
They also have some other design and construction requirements that really ensure the safety of their roadway.
Sure, understand. Okay, good enough. Any other questions? Then it's been moved and seconded to award this PW twenty-two-three dash twenty-five to the low bidder, Western United Civil Group. Hall and fair, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
And just to wrap up, I just want to kind of just put on the radar for council is reminders that tomorrow is the Thurston Chamber Forum and the State of the Community speech, where they'll have the mayors of Thurston County as well as the chair of the board, county commissioner. commissioners present on behalf of the communities and our own mayor Ryder will be there speaking. So I just want to put that on everybody's radar. It's 11, the doors open at 11:30, program starts at noon and it's over at the Rutherford Center over in St. Martins. And then lastly, just a reminder, we heard about it earlier, but also the retirement ceremony for Fire Chief Brooks, Lacey Fire District III will be held this Friday over on Sixth Avenue at the Community College at 3:00 p.m. So if you can stop by there, that'd be great. And that concludes the city manager report. And I think we also have the Martin Luther King event that's going to occur on Friday.
Well, no, this is.
Monday, the 20th at the New Life Baptist Church.
Yeah, and we'll be, have one more meeting before that happens.
There's another event?
The Friday before.
South Puget Sound.
Correct. Yeah. That concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. You stole my thunder. I was going to talk about, as well, about the upcoming things, but I appreciate that. We'll go on to boards, commissions and committee reports. I'm up first and I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
I also do not have a report. However, I did want to make the council aware of some new members that we have on the EDC Board this year. There were several open spots and we are close to filling them. We have one spot that we're just not going to fill just yet. But new members include Mitch Dietz from Coldwell Banker, Dr. Melissa Grant from Providence, Al Yee, who is the owner of Tap House, Mike Brewer, American Pump and Drilling, Todd Hanson from Hanson Construction. And we're also looking that the, Tom Water will be transferring Mayor Sullivan in and Peter Gobby out. And that is all I have.
Councilmember Greenstein.
I have no report, but I just, I did want to just let everyone know that the radio system for TCOM that I've been talking about now for several years is fully operational now. Everyone, both fire and police, have moved over to the digital system. And from what I hear, it's working very well and going pretty smoothly.
Councilmember Stebbin.
No report, but Orca meets tomorrow at 10:00 a.m.
Councilmember Cox.
No report.
It's the first of the year. I can't imagine we have any, very many reports. Councilmember Vasquez.
No report. Thurston Regional Planning Council meets on Friday.
Councilmember Dunning.
No report.
Yeah. I also just, I brought this up the last meeting of last year, just as a check-in, if, you know, how's everything going on your boards, commissions? Is there anything that needs to be changed for any sort of reason? I haven't heard from anyone, so I think we will be putting it forward to our current boards and commissions that all of our representations is going to stay the same.
There's one thing, this is on Nick's assignment list, is Thurston Thrives. And, you know, we used to have a, I think it was a monthly meeting of the executive group, and that no longer exists. We now have, I think, quarterly meetings where electeds are invited into the room and we're, we're hearing information. The last one was fantastic. It was about the use of cell phones by students and how North Thurston has done its work to produce that. So I don't want you to feel like you should be the only person there, Nick. I think all of us should make an effort to go to these things, but it's not something that's going to be a monthly report out.
That's true. Also, there's, we will no longer have a Thurston County Board of Health representative going for this next year as, as it's been explained. But thank you, Robin, for all the hard work.
Yes.
I mean, you were sort of thrown into that and a new system and trying to figure it out under new law. And so we, thank you for everything.
It was very exciting.
I bet. It was a big learning. And so I will definitely kind of go over the boards and commissions, you know, the assignments and have a conversation on the ones that we just don't really attend anymore. Should we keep it on or not? And I'll, I'll talk to the city manager a little bit about that and we'll, we'll maybe clean some of this up going forward. Okay, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Happy New Year.
Seeing none. With objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.